The City of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Teresa, are you ready?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The first item is the approval of minutes of the regular joint board meeting on December 12th, 2017.
Motion for approval.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Consent calendar, I'll turn over to our city clerk.
There are six items. Two A is to make an additional appropriation of $19,155 within the general fund funded by Manrus Trust contributions to renovate the bathrooms at Manrus Library. Two B is to transfer $6,000 within the Equipment Building Sinking Fund to purchase gun lockers for the police department. Two C is to make an additional appropriation of $100 within the Special Grants and Donations Fund funded by a donation for the CERT team. Two D is to transfer $32,000 within the Public Works Fleet Operating Budget for the purchase of equipment. Two E is to transfer $16,000 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund for CDBG projects. And two F is to transfer $37,350 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund for TIF consultant services.
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion on the consent? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Item three.
To transfer $80,000 from the Equipment Building Sinking Fund contingency account for the purchase of an email archival system.
Motion to approve. Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And four is the monthly revenue and expense report presentation by the Controller.
There she is. Come back. I made it back. Good evening, everyone, and Happy New Year. Just a couple of things to report on the audit on the monthly revenue and expenditure report. You have it in front of you. Our tax revenues are coming in very strong. As I mentioned, we're already at 57.9% through December, so that is a very good sign. 59.7% for the prior taxes, and we're at 50.1% for the interest and lien fees through December. One other area that is coming in very strong are licenses fees and permits. We're at 68% through December, and that is primarily a result of building permit fees which are coming in very strong. And I know there were a few large ones that came in at the end of December as well. Investment earnings also coming in very strong. We're already at 98.6% of the amount budgeted. We're noticing some slight increases in the interest rates. And I know we ladder a lot of the CDs throughout the year, so we're able to take advantage of longer-term interest rates that are a little bit higher. So that has been coming in well as -- that has been coming in very strong as well. The one thing that I do want to just go back and just clarify on the state budget. When the state budget was adopted and we looked at the analysis, we had looked at about a $2.5 million reduction from what we had budgeted versus what the budget came in at from the state. The primary reductions were in the pilot state-owned grant, in that municipal revenue sharing grant, and then on the property tax. At that time, there was an additional $250,000 holdback that the governor had put in place. And we were led to believe at that time that it was coming from the -- that it was not coming from ECS and that it was going to be coming from the Alliance Grant that goes directly to the Board of Education. We did clarify last week that that actually will be coming off of the town share of the ECS money, not -- or the city's share of the ECS money, not the Alliance Grant. So the Board of Education will be getting their full Alliance Grant for this fiscal year. So I just wanted to clarify that because I know that was something that was discussed at one of the last meetings, and I know the Board of Ed was concerned about that as well. As far as expenditures go, I know we will be watching the snow removal clause. It seems like lately we've been hit on holidays and weekends, so we'll keep a watch on that as we go forward throughout the year very closely. And then the one other thing I did want to just let you know, the audit is complete. The audit was filed on December 27th. I want to thank my staff, primarily Robin Manuel and Skip Gillis in my office, and Jody McRae for pushing and getting that complete. It always is a push at the end of the calendar year to get that done because we do have a December 31st deadline. So that is done. If you haven't received it yet, I know Jody probably will be sending it out shortly to all of you. And again, any questions? I know it will go to the Banking and Audit Committee for review with the auditors. And of course, it's an open meeting, so anybody can attend if you want to hear what the auditors have to say. And I think that's it. I don't know if there are any questions.
Through the chair. Diane, do you know approximately, and if you don't, maybe you can email this to us afterward, how many of the tax collections were advanced payments? Taxpayers that took advantage of paying in 2017 versus January of '18 for their property tax? Do you know that number?
I don't. We would have to look into that. But it would be something that was billed for the current year.
Correct.
We couldn't collect anything that was --
Right.
Correct.
Okay.
We can get that number for you.
I'm just curious.
I don't have that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Any other questions for the Controller?
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other business proper to come before the joint board tonight?
Through the chair, please.
Yes.
I just want to let everybody aware, I know that Jody McRae has sent out emails, and we will be having a special Board of Finance meeting to review the audit that was conducted by Bloom Shapiro on the Board of Education shortfall. That meeting is scheduled for 5:00 PM on January 23rd. It's a Tuesday prior to the regular Board of Finance meeting. Council, Board of Finance, Board of Ed members have been invited, but it is open to the general public. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ma'am, through the chair.
Yes.
Back in November, I had asked a question of corporate council, and I know it was premature in asking, but for budgeting purposes, I was wondering if the corporate councils had the opportunity to review case law, to make a determination whether the city is responsible for our previous mayor's legal bills?
We are.
We are. Thank you.
Yeah, we have been making strides in other areas in terms of controlling costs. I don't know if you'd like to speak to your member, your memo of --
Yes. One of my first memoranda to all department heads was to remind department heads that the responsibility for hiring all outside counsel across the entire city is with my office and with the consent, the written consent of the mayor. So I'm trying to rein all of that in and get a handle on all of the outside counsel that we do have. And most department heads have been very cooperative. And we obviously do need outside counsel for specialized areas of law when a conflict would arise. And so we're -- but we are. We're going to try and keep a rein on that for you. Okay?
Thank you. Are there any other questions to come before the joint board? Hearing none. Is there a motion to adjourn? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are going to start our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us tonight, everyone. We are calling to order the regular meeting of the City Council for the month of February. The first item on our agenda under opening ceremonies is a moment of silence, which I'd like to ask for consideration for former City Council and State Rep James White, who passed away last week. Thank you. The second item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of our regular meeting. Has everybody had a chance to review them? And are there any changes or corrections that need to be made? Hearing none. All in favor of approval?
Aye.
Opposed?
Who made the motion? So moved. Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Motion carries. The next item is public participation. We do have four members who have signed up to speak. We have been enjoying an open format, which means that we do not have a limitation on the amount of time a speaker needs to convey their thoughts to the City Council. I would just ask for consideration because we do have several discussion items tonight that you be cogent with your remarks, and we will hear them accordingly. The first item, the first person signed up is Attorney Rachel Baird, representing Joseph Miskowski, 76 Benham Street. The item to be addressed is a tax lien on the property concerning code enforcement.
Hi, that's me. I'm Attorney Rachel Baird, and I am here to speak on behalf of a resident or a property owner of Bristol. The property in question is 76 Benham Street in Bristol, and my client is Joseph Miskowski. This issue has to do with a tax lien that's been placed on his property in the approximate amount of $1,400. He was not noticed that there was an unsafe or blight condition. Now, as I'm sure you know, the code provides for process where on the property an unsafe or blight condition is noticed or complained about. And when that happens, the individual receives a notice by mail at their property, at their residence of record, and a notice is posted on the property. In this case, proper notice was not provided, and I -- my understanding is that the city does not contest that. The proper notice wasn't provided. So in accordance with the report of an unsafe or blight condition, a lawn company went out and did approximately $1,400 of work, and my client was billed, did not pay. He said he didn't get notice. Had he gotten notice, he would have contested that it constituted an unsafe or blight condition and/or he would have fixed the condition if he would have been convinced that it did meet that standard. Now, as an attorney, obviously, we work for fees. We're in business. A case like this that presents an issue of $1,400, you weigh the cost of hiring an attorney against the cost of pursuing a matter or litigating a matter, especially when there have been discussions to lower that amount owed in, you know, in contemplation of perhaps resolving the issue amicably. I said to my client, you know, I don't know what to tell you. The law provides for notice. We're a system. We're a country of laws. And when the government doesn't follow its own laws and leaves it up to an individual to pay out of his own funds, an attorney to attempt to compel the government to follow its own laws, it's fundamentally unfair. Now, is it possible that the ends justify the means in this case? Can the city say, "Well, there was an unsafe or blight condition there. Whether notice or not was provided, we fixed the condition, and the person who benefited from that should be held responsible"? Perhaps. But I would argue to you that the reason we have laws is because the government is obligated to follow them. And in this case, the government didn't follow the law. And it's a shame that a resident of Bristol would be left to his own financial devices to try to compel the government to do so. And I think this is an issue of public importance. I think it sends a signal to residents when the government doesn't follow the law, especially when the government expects its residents to do so. And I said to Mr. Miskowski that I don't know if this is a case that is financially viable to pursue in any other way, but I certainly would want to bring his perspective to the City Council and alert the council to what I argue is a fundamental unfairness in this case. Thank you.
I do know that this is a matter that we are taking up in executive session later tonight, along with another item of relevant meaning. I'm also aware that there have been other cases of defective notices within the last two years, and that in general, I completely agree with your stance that public notice and notice to homeowners is something that this program was actually modeled on. And when it does in fact not happen, it does cause a hardship. We are in the process of cleaning up a variety of old cases. And I can just tell you that while I'm committed to the theory of the broken glass theory, and that that property did require some cleanup, that I understand your concerns and that we will be taking them up in executive session.
If I could just comment on the broken glass theory, I certainly understand that. It's from the 1970s, New York City. And I would submit that it also applies to -- this may be to some a small issue of notice, but when we ignore the small issues of notice, it opens up the door for residents and citizens to question whether in the bigger issues, steps and processes are being ignored.
I couldn't agree with you more.
Thank you.
We are looking to strengthen some of those processes. I do have a question, though, for Attorney Lacy. Have we attempted any type of settlement? Or, I mean, it is a $1,400 lien. It would seem to me that, as Attorney Baird stated, has there been any attempt to resolve this as we have with other cases with defective notices?
We had a -- agreement worked out with prior -- the prior mayor. It was rejected.
Okay. We'll be taking this up in executive session.
Thank you. It was a pleasure.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
May I just -- I'm Joe Miskowski.
Okay. 76 Benham Street.
Yep. 76 Benham Street. Still. The comment that was just made, I had made an offer with a prior attorney, and it was rejected by the city. After it was rejected by the city, I retained Attorney Baird. So I put my money into the attorney where I was going to give it to the city of Bristol. And, you know, so any comment about previous agreement, there was never an agreement because they rejected it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Jeffrey Caggianno from 27 Cricket, speaking on MBS Arts --
Magnet School.
Magnet School.
Hello, everybody. 27 Cricket Hill Road, for the record. I come before the City Council today. I just want to give you guys some information, and I want you to take this as open dialogue. I know in my two years on the board, there have been some tensions, and with the audit coming up on the 23rd, there could be more. But I truly give this to you kind of as a citizen over, and I'm not speaking for the Board of Ed on this. But to that end, I found out some important information. The MBS Arts and Magnet School was left off the 2018 School Construction Priority List that was compiled by the Department of Administrative Services on December 15th. I have let the superintendent and the board leadership know about that on the 17th. But subsequently to that, and most recently, through the work of Henry Martin and his staff in the Senate doing a little bit more work, we have identified that our application was turned in, as you all know, because we rushed it through a couple of different committees, after the June 30th deadline. So although I remain, and that's a statutorily required deadline to have any funding for the year 2018, and this is the information that we're getting from the Department of Administrative Services, I should have started out to say that I'm wholeheartedly in favor of the Memorial Boulevard Arts and Magnet School. I think that's the best reuse of the building. And I've been talking to a lot of people, and I have some connections in the governor's office as well. And I believe that this, there's a lot of interest in this school. But I think the bottom line here is that although we are hoping to perhaps get an answer by February, it's my understanding that we will not hear about this until February of 2019. So my plea and my urging to this group is to be patient. I think there's some other good news as well, as you may or may not have heard. The Board of Ed just rejected the DRA feasibility study that came in, and I think we're going to take some more time to look at that. I think it's important for us to understand what the effect, the true effect of an arts and magnet school in the district would be, as well as the controversy that has arisen around the K system. So we did hear some feedback on that. So I think we did the right thing there. It's going to take us a little longer to do that anyway, and I think we were prepared to share that information with you. I, again, want to caution that making quick decisions, doing anything else, is not the best way to go. I think when we look at rushing into a theater and some of the work that's been talked about for years here, I just want to caution that we could, in a couple of generations, be in the same situation, staring at an empty, deteriorating historic building, and we don't want to do that. So I'm happy to share this information with anybody who would like it. As I said, it's just new information, and I thought it was important to try to open up that dialogue if anybody has any questions or certain.
I'm not really sure that that's new information. I'm not sure that it's accurate information, and I think that there's been a lot of confusion dating back to a conversation that Councilman Mills and I had in mid-December about the differences between the School Construction Project list that is dated June 30th, 2017, which we relate for. Through some inactivity over the summer into the fall, we missed a critical November deadline, and we are too early for the school building construction list that is dated June 30th, 2018. But by all indications, we are poised for when the session starts and the legislators reconvene to be added on an administrative basis to the June 30th, 2017 School Building Construction Project list because we are ready. But that has been the extent of my assurances from my contacts in Hartford. So clearly, we're talking to different people, and I think maybe we should have the superintendent just clarify if she has any new information concerning this as well, because I think we were both on the same page that there is not a delay at this time.
I was given the same information, that actually, some paperwork from the prior administration did not reach the person it needed to reach in time, but that there will be as soon as the next session begins, a way of putting that back on the priority list, which is awesome. And I'm hopeful for that as well.
Yep. So and I think that obviously, when all of us get together to speak with our legislative delegation before they convene in February, we'll definitely have that on the agenda to discuss to make sure that we're all on the same page.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Through the chair.
Yes.
If I may, I think it's a great idea. Obviously, there's so much confusion as to what's going on. We did have a discussion about it. I agree exactly what you said. You kind of reassured me with everything that went on. So if anything that we can get for a definitive answer, obviously, we would all want to have. So when you do speak with people, if we can get a definitive answer.
And I do appreciate everyone's interest and concern and enthusiasm about the project, but I will caution everybody as well that when there's various degrees of questions being asked from different committees and different viewpoints and different audiences, that sometimes that does make Hartford a little uncomfortable with where we stand as a community, and whether we're unified before a project, or whether we're all looking to get a step hold in maybe a different agenda. So when we have that legislative meeting and we're looking to possibly do it on a regional basis, which would bring in other components of the delegation from Central Connecticut who will also hear about this project, I would encourage anyone who has an interest in that to attend.
Great. Thank you.
I see my neighbor has signed up. Shannon, did you want to speak, or were you just citing in because you're a good Catholic girl and you thought you had to?
I thought so.
Okay. So we will go on to Ed Dudko from 116 Lewis, and he's talking about MBS and plaques.
I think a lot of stuff already got addressed just with that last speaker. The first speaker was very eloquent, too, with all that stuff. And Helen, hey, Marquette, the Warriors beat the Friars last week. Overtime, though. Okay?
I lost $10 at the B.C. Invitational, so I'm not betting with anybody else.
Hey, I can't call the Warriors, Eddie Marquette. We have to change the name because it's politically incorrect. You know, we're the Golden Eagles now. Marquette Golden Eagles. Well, I got to go home, listen to the game real soon. Oh, anyways, I got a lot of empathy for the Indians, you know, Native Americans. Look, they had their property, houses stolen from them, too. All right?
Good segue.
Well, look, you have an open house tomorrow.
I do.
Okay. Four to seven. Yes, I do want a plaque. My mother turns 93 in April. I'm not really asking for much. I told you, there's already a plaque there. What a guy who used to be the head of the BDA, who said he wished he had a gun, talking about a council member. And what did he walk away with? Like I always say this, he walked away with a half a million dollars. That's what he walked away with. I'm asking for a cheesy plaque. Just a special thank you to the Boogren family for keeping the majority of this parcel of Southeast Bristol Business Park together as one piece of land for over six decades. Enlist their names while she's still alive. That's all. I'll come and talk to you tomorrow.
Okay.
And I got to hope I beat Seton Hall tonight.
Is there anyone else who is here tonight that did not have the opportunity to sign up on the sign-up sheet and would like the opportunity to speak to the City Council? Okay. Hearing none. We'll move on to the next agenda item, which is announcements. So we will start on my far left with Councilman Maderos.
Okay. Just have a couple of quick announcements. Winter recreation program registration is open now. That includes a number of activities at the pool and youth and adult fitness classes, et cetera. So you can find all that at BristolRec.com. Additionally, there is now ice skating at the amphitheater at Rockwell Park, and it's just based on weather conditions, so definitely check it out. Skating is unsupervised, so please adhere to the rules of that. The Pivot Young Professional Group that I mentioned last month meeting, they're holding a Family Feud networking event at Spare Time Bowling on Thursday, January 18th, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM. The event is two hours and includes unlimited bowling, shoe rentals, and a game of laser tag. So if that's something you're interested in, contact pivot@pivotct@gmail.com for more information and to register. Also, a resident is organizing a local chapter of Stand for the Silent. Stand for the Silent is a nonprofit organization that exists within the U.S. It was founded by a group of high school students in Oklahoma City in response to the death by suicide of one of their classmates at age 11. The goal of the platform is to provide the community members with resources to recognize and help prevent bullying and bring awareness of the impact of bullying within communities. So the Bristol Chapter is looking to hold their first meeting on Sunday, January 21st, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM. They're going to be meeting at Starbucks and discussing future meeting dates at other locations. If you're interested in that or want more information, you can go to StandForTheSilent.org or you can contact Jamie Klout, who is heading that up. Her email is jamie Lynn dot klout at gmail dot com. And then briefly, police would like to remind you to be sure that you are clearing your personal sidewalks during the blizzards. It's really important that those are followed. And then also a reminder to please lock your vehicles and do not leave your keys just sitting in your car. That's all I got.
Just a brief announcement from the marketing committee. I wanted to make sure that everyone goes to the website, Bristol All Heart. There's another show this month for uniquely Bristol. It concerns the fitness and people making resolutions for the new year and some of the things that are, that people should do. And also, the Clock and Watch Museum is featured. It's on YouTube as well. Also, coming from the chamber, they've put together a informational piece, a new informational box that will be handed out to all new businesses that come to town, new residents that will be coming to town. And there's also, we spent a lot of time on a program Larry Covino was there talking about the Adult Ed Program and the significance of that program and how important it is. And he gave us some statistics that were really enlightening as to what is going on in our town and the need for adult education and the fact that that program is free. So again, all that information is on Bristol All Heart and I would urge everybody to go to that site. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The West End Association has its major fundraiser this spring and late winter, effective March 1st through April 30th. You can buy one of these Taste of Bristol tickets for $5. And it's this, like I said, it's a major fundraiser for a very good community organization. And by buying one of these tickets for $5, the holder can take 20% off your restaurant bill at 38 participating restaurants throughout the city. It's a fabulous thing for our restaurants. It's a slam dunk for anybody who buys a ticket. You get your money back going once. So this is for the West End Association and the tickets are available in the mayor's office, Hamlin &amp; Sons, South Side Meat Market, and my office. And if you have any questions, call my cell or email me on my CD Facebook page. The second thing, Your Honor, is the Chamber of Commerce is having its annual forecast, economic forecast breakfast this Thursday at Nucci's. Anybody interested, contact the chamber. It's usually a very informational event for economic forecasting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I have one announcement this evening and it regards one of our citizens who met quite a milestone. On Saturday, she celebrated her 105th birthday and I have this lovely picture of Helen Komenetsky. And over here on the table, we have our version of a large birthday card for Helen. If anyone here at the meeting would like to sign the card for Helen during the meeting or after the meeting, we'd like to send it to her. It's right here on this table and it's facing that camera there so that they could see that on TV, our lovely picture of Helen. Helen celebrated her birthday on Saturday. She was active in the Forestville Boys Club, for those of you that remember that there used to be another boys' club in Forestville. She worked, did volunteer things at Bristol Hospital and in various PTOs. And Komenetsky Estates here in Bristol, the apartment building, is named after her husband in recognition of his contributions to the Bristol Housing Authority. So we do want to wish Helen a very happy birthday and remember her here at the meeting.
And if I could just make a suggestion, if we could move the card and the markers maybe to the outside hallway as people who may be leaving early will have an opportunity to, to sign that.
Brilliant idea.
Because I can't see Attorney Steig.
And it was actually back here and I moved it forward to try and give people an opportunity. But yes, thank, thank you, Officer Pelletier. Please sign the card. We'd like to fill up the page.
Don't ruin the card.
That's it for me. Thank you.
Councilman Han.
I just have a couple of short announcements. First of all, the Bristol Library has just started their hours on Sunday through March and will be open from 1:00 to 5:00 every Sunday. And also, they now have a digital version of the New York Times available at the library and it actually goes back to 1851 to the current day. And there's a little gap in there at some point, but for the most part, you can get all your papers there. And I did get this from Councilman Peter here and he would be very disappointed if I didn't mention that this is also available in Mandarin. So, and Spanish. Also, the Senior Volunteer Tax Relief Program is a change is being voted on today, but I did thought, think it would be a good idea to bring it up. This is a tax relief for seniors, residents 65 and older who own real property. And if they volunteer for 50 hours during the course of the year from July 1st to June 30th, they do get a tax credit for their property tax. And there is a change. I know that we have it late in the program, Mayor, and I'd like to make a motion to move that agenda item to the beginning, right after the announcements, if I could.
Well, we could do it now. So, so the motion is on the floor to move the item concerning the volunteer senior tax program from the addenda to announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, you now have the floor to discuss the addenda item.
The item itself is, the change is to increase the annual income, is my understanding?
Yes.
To, from an individual, a single, 45K and from a couple, a household income of 50K. And it had been 45, 35, 200 for a single and 42, 9 for a couple.
So it's our hope that this will allow more people to participate and take advantage of it because to date, there has not been a full utilization of this program. So that's in the form of a motion to approve the new program, which will be effective February 1st.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? And there is from Councilman Mills. Is there any discussion on the senior tax credit volunteer program? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. The motion carries and people who are interested in applying for that program start at the senior center or do they start, they start at the senior center? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that all you have, Councilman?
That's it.
Okay, Councilman Kelly.
Evening, I have a couple of announcements.
Turn it on.
Yeah, I've got them.
Oh, they're on.
An appreciative thank you to all of Bristol's police, fire, and EMTs, all first responders, as well as our public works employees and social services agencies that stepped up their efforts during our first major snowstorm of the season. In addition to the storm, first responders and public works work for extended periods in dangerously low temperatures compounded by high winds. Your dedication and commitment are appreciated. And secondly, I'd like to ask everyone to join us in fellowship as the Bristol NAACP celebrates the legacy and life of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. with a catered breakfast at Bristol Eastern, Monday, January 15th, from 8:00 to 10:00 a.m. The featured speaker will be Dr. Sam Galloway. Dr. Galloway currently serves as the Director of Human Resources for the Bristol Board of Education. Prior to coming to Bristol, he was the principal of Bloomfield High School and increased grad rates from 74 to 91% in just three years. Dr. Galloway is also a veteran who left his position at Bloomfield for 18 months to pursue terrorism suspects in northern Iraq. There will be a special performance by a gospel choir and a presentation of dignitaries. Tickets are $12 for adults, $6 for children 12 and under. And for tickets, please contact Lexi Magnum at 860-582-2899 or Ripley Patton at 860-830-0719. And tickets are also available from NAACP board members as well. And finally, the West End Association meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, January 10th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Riverview Apartments on Laurel Street. As you enter the complex, bear to the left and the door to enter is right there. Thank you.
And if I can, through the chair, I just wanted to add one other thank you added to Councilman Kelly's thank yous, to the water department as well. We've had an inordinate amount of water main breaks in a very, very cold season, so I wanted to add them to our list of folks to thank.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, hearing none. We can move on to the consent calendar.
There are two items. 5A is to place on file the new hire report for December 2017 and 5B is to place on file the final report of the renovation committee for Engine Company 4 and disband the committee as their work is substantially complete.
Any discussion on the items to be pulled off? Hearing none, all in favor of the consent calendar?
And who made the motion?
I made the motion.
Thank you.
Is there?
I see.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I would just like to add as an aside, if we could just ensure that the committee members for Engine 4 get letters of thanks for their service. Okay, moving on to agenda item six, which is the reports and other committee reports. We will start with the ones that are listed and then we will move to council members to see if there's other committee reports that are not already listed. I believe we have listed real estate and ordinance, so I will go to Councilman Felaski.
Thank you, Your Honor. In item 6A, we have a motion, Your Honor. I hereby move that the city of Bristol accept the offer from Carrier Construction and/or its assigns in the amount of $500 for city-owned property known as Lot 254 High Street on map 30 of the Bristol Assessor's Office. The purpose of this sale is to merge Lot 254 High Street into 186 High Street. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? So just for those of you who may not know where this is, there's a small parcel with a very difficult elevation that is adjacent to two parcels that Carrier Construction had actually purchased and fully renovated. So this will be all part of that and I think it's a great motion, especially because this one small piece of property has been a problem for Federal Hill for years because there was no ownership. And I would just like to say that the neighbors who live along that piece of High Street have done a great job of going over and keeping it up and I like the fact that this is now a long-term solution for them. So we have a second, I thought, from Councilman Mills. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries.
Your Honor, we have another from real estate. I hereby move that the city of Bristol enter into an exclusive right to sell listing contract with Keller Williams Realty to list 384 Fall Mountain Road for an additional six months and to extend the listing agreement to Keller Williams for 63 Gridley Street for an additional six months. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents and I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have more?
I do, well, I do, Your Honor.
Are we doing Fall Mountain?
Well, I missed that.
That's what we just did, actually.
Oh, did I miss Glen Street? Excuse me, Your Honor. That was 6C. I have another one for real estate, Your Honor. I hereby move that the city of Bristol enter into an exclusive right to sell listing contract with Keller Williams Realty to sell Lot 35D Glen Street. I further move that this matter be referred to Corporation Council to prepare and/or review any necessary documents. I further move that the mayor or acting mayor be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate the same.
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And now we're moving on to the ordinance committee section.
Thank you, Your Honor. Motion to waive the reading. In accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances to be introduced this date pertaining to Section 18-189 of the Planning Code be waived.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion to waive the reading has been made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, now the motion, a motion carries.
Your Honor, we have a motion to introduce.
Yes.
In accordance to Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Wednesday, January 17th, 2018, at 4:45 p.m. in the first floor meeting room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee and that the city clerk published notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the city, a Code of Ordinances as required by the city charter.
Second.
Any discussion on the introduction of Section 18-189? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries and the public hearing has been set.
Your Honor, we have one more from ordinance. Motion to waive reading in accordance with Section 21F of the city, of the Charter of the City of Bristol, I hereby move that the reading of the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances be, to be introduced this date pertaining to Section 2-12.1 of the Administrative Code be waived.
Is there a second to waive the reading of the amendments? Discussion on the waiving of the reading of the amendment? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, a motion to introduce, in accordance with Section 21F of the Charter of the City of Bristol, the following amendments to the Code of Ordinances are hereby introduced. I hereby move that the time and place of Wednesday, January 17th, 2018, at 4:30 p.m. in the first floor meeting room, City Hall, 111 North Main Street, Bristol, Connecticut, be set for the holding of a public hearing thereon by the ordinance committee and that the city clerk published notice of said public hearing and the proposed amendments to the Code of Ordinances as required by city charter.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Do you have any other committee reports?
Thank you, Your Honor. As a matter of fact, Mayor, would you be good enough, please? The mayor covered me at the Code of Enforcement Committee this past week. Could you please speak on 267 Main Street or bring the council up to date, please?
Okay, so code enforcement obviously meets monthly and for those of you who may be unfamiliar with the process, all of the various enforcement departments will come together and we will share information. There will be discussion about properties of interest and particularly one that has been on the radar for a very long time is 267-269 Main Street. And there's been some movement on a bunch of different fronts with this property, including the fact that there is now some ownership shifts happening. There's some legal issues going on with ownership in terms of who finances it, but the overall issue is that it continues to be an eyesore and as our concern is from a property maintenance and code standpoint, are the sanitary and safety of the living conditions of the people who are in the building as well as the neighborhood in general. The biggest concern that has developed over the course of probably the last two or three weeks is fire code. So the fire sprinkler and the alarm system was compromised, which is a huge issue and it's one that has very little gray area to it. It's either working or it's not. When there is safety issues like that, one of the mechanisms that we have in place is condemnation, which means that we as the city would be responsible for relocating and paying for the relocation of the people who are within the building that has been deemed unsafe. So that becomes very costly and eventually, the owner gets leaned and the city hopefully recoups a portion of that. With all of the ownership and financing and, and really, an incredible amount of leans already placed on this building, especially with the weather, the, the thought of displacement was one that we were not really hoping to, to do as a first cause. So what we ended up doing was a team inspection after code enforcement where a majority of us went up and obviously, there was immediate work started on the fire alarm panel as well as the sprinklers within 24 hours, which made the building safe again. But there is a ton of other code work that needed to be done and I was happy to see that the property management of the, the new group that is now responsible for this building addressed a lot of them immediately that weekend and through the weekend. And on Monday, yeah, actually yesterday, we had a meeting in my office with all of the code enforcement officers, the person who is now holding the note for the building as well as the person who is going to be responsible for the upkeep. And they were given, probably, the visual from that meeting was files that literally probably were this high on the conference room table and it was not, there was no need to exaggerate files. They literally were the files that comprised that one code enforcement action on that one property over, you know, fire, building, zoning, health. The Bristol Burlington Health District has a housing inspector and she was at the meeting. Fire was at the meeting, zoning, building inspectors. And it was a very good conversation about the fact that this has been a 15-year problem and that the tolerance level is pretty much gone at this point. So we have held out a little bit of hope that with this new division and really frankly, financial breakdown of some of these key LLC holders, that there may actually be light at the end of the tunnel. But I've been saying this since 2001, when they all really started heavily investing in Bristol. But this is actually probably one of the most indicative case studies of what happens when someone comes in and leverages properties, takes out the equity, assigns it to another LLC or sells it, buys it back, the bank takes it, they grab it back without any significant investment. And it's something, broken theory, broken window theory, blight, call it whatever it is, it definitely puts the ambiance of a neighborhood at risk. And there's also other activities. I did not have a conversation with police about call volume at that address, but I know that we go there. There was an ambulance there when I was at the library over the weekend and there was an overdose and they brought the person back, but it makes you wonder about also the somewhat cumulative effect of social services on some of these properties as well. So overall, I think that I can speak relatively in general terms for the rest of the departments that were represented at that meeting, that we actually may, at this point, have a handle on what we're going to be doing as a path going forward on this property, which really is, you know, there's very few that have gotten to this point, but there are several that are similar. And, and you hope that at the end of the day, people who are, who come to this meeting and represent that they're going to do things in a certain way, do so, not only for the life of the people who are there, but also for the neighborhood and the residents that have to look at a building like that every day. Library patrons, where we invested over $15 million for our library, you know, that's what they're looking at. And so, again, I was very pleased with the outcome of the meeting and I'm looking forward to hopefully continuing the conversation with the two people who came and represented the property in the hopes that we can continue to really clean this up, both from a financial neighborhood standpoint as well as get this file closed once and for all.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, no other committee reports? I'll move on to Councilman Mills.
Sure, thank you.
Committee reports?
I just have two quick things from the Board of Park Commissioners. The Page Park Pool Analysis is being finalized. TLB Architecture presented to the Parks Board in December, plans including reviewing TLB architecture presented to the Parks Board in December, plans including reviewing options for repairs and revitalization of that facility. And as someone that used to run the facility, I think it's long overdue, so I'm really excited that that's making some progress, because the place is falling apart, literally.
Literally, figuratively. And I think as we enter a very difficult economic budget season, it's going to be really incumbent upon all of us to start assigning value and priorities to some of these projects. I mean, the Page Park Pool is such a huge facility that it really needs to be moved up on the priority list, and I'm looking forward to seeing more of the plans. The ones that we saw last month, the preliminary plan was, it's actually very exciting, the opportunities to transform that as really a family-friendly facility, which I think is something that we'd all be interested in having.
So, the superintendent will be moving forward to the Board of Finance to start asking for some funds there. And then lastly, we had at the last meeting a discussion on Kern Park, lively discussion. We had, I think, 40 or 50-ish people there in the audience.
Yes, we did.
So, but it was great, we had neighbors, and members of the Kern Park Association came to kind of give a historical background on the history of the park, some of their views of what they want to see there and what they want to maintain. The commission and the department are going to stay in contact with these individuals as things continue to develop there. I know the item has been moved to the Building and Maintenance Committee for further review. And that's all I have.
Okay. We'll start with Councilman Fordyce, or do you have committee reports?
I do. I have two motions from the Salary Committee, which just finished meeting right before we started here. The first motion I have is from the Salary Committee, which unanimously recommends to City Council to approve elimination of the Senior Administrative Assistant position in Youth and Community Services, which is a local 233, Code 6, $20.65 an hour to $22.93 an hour, and to approve changing the local 233, Code 6, position of programs and administrative assistant in community services from a part-time, non-benefited position to a full-time benefitted position, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion.
And the benefits of doing that to the city?
In combination with the second motion, it's a little bit complicated, but I think to simplify, we currently have a Director of Youth Services, and we have a full-time position and a part-time position. The part-time position is currently vacant, and that's been part of the problem, in that it is a part-time position, so people often move on to full-time position. But it's also been an issue for the Director in that a lot of the work she does on a daily basis could be done by someone else, and she could be out in the field doing more of some of the other things she has to do. So, the combined, the combination of these two motions is basically going from one and a half positions under the Director to two full-time positions, and there was a lot of moving around of different duties within those positions, but that's the outcome.
Thank you.
Was there a second on that?
I believe there was a second. Did you make a second? Councilman Pulaski seconded.
Thank you.
There's been discussion. Is there additional discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
The second motion from the Salary Committee is that the Salary Committee unanimously recommends to City Council to approve a new position of Assistant to the Director of Youth and Community Services, which is a local 233, Code 8, position, $24.01 an hour to $26.52 an hour, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Councilman Hahn, committee reports?
For the committee on the aging, I have a couple announcements from the Bristol Senior Center. The Senior Center will be offering a free tax preparation through AARP again this year. The program will be held on Tuesdays and Fridays from 8:30 AM to 12:30 PM, beginning February 6. 24 people are going to be processed each day, so it's on a first-come, first-served basis. There's also a reminder that the Senior Center works with the Social Security Administration to offer a video service system allowing residents to Skype with the Hartford Office every Wednesday from 9:00 AM to 12:00 noon, and this service is open to the public, and no appointments are necessary. They've also asked that I announce that membership for the Senior Center is free to any Bristol resident aged 55 and older. For the mayor's task force on, for the creation of the Arts and Entertainment Committee, we had our first meeting on the 29th of December. In excess of 30 people were signed up, and on a very bad weather night, we had 21 people come to the meeting, and we had a great discussion, not just on the history of what we have done in the past, but also what we look to do in the future, and where we are now, what we can do better, what we've done well. So, it's going to continue on a bi-weekly basis. Our next meeting is this Thursday, and I expect at least as many people to show for this. This Thursday, we'll be creating subcommittees to address several issues and items that need to be addressed in order to create our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Kelly?
Yes, I have three items regarding the Board of Ed I'd like to touch on. Recently, the Bristol Business Education Foundation awarded 17 grants totaling over $14,000 to educators and schools throughout Bristol in a ceremony at the Board of Education. The foundation founded in 1990 works along with the Board of Education to fund and promote educational endeavors aimed at improving learning achievement and skill development, along with encouraging creativity and excellence in teaching, and expanding community involvement from individuals, business, and civic organizations. And I also attended my first school readiness council meeting, and it was a very pleasant experience, very informative, and it was reported that all spaces are filled, but programs will continue to take names for a waitlist. A total of 396 preschool children are being served by the School Readiness Grant, which means $245,000 coming into our community on a monthly basis to help support programs, and that's 28.8, 2.88 million annually. Bristol Preschool Child Care Center, Imagination Nation, Museum of Early Learning, and four Board of Ed schools to provide quality early care and education to our three- and four-year-old residents. And these funds pay for at least partial salaries of 96 professionals working in this field. This is not only a program that assists young children, giving them the opportunity to learn, but it also assists working parents where their children are placed in a safe, nurturing, and quality setting. But we can't forget, this is also economic development. This grant helps to pay the salaries of numerous professionals, many Bristol residents. And since Bristol is at a school readiness grant capacity, serving preschool children, the School Readiness Grant Manager has been told by the Office of Early Learning that our grant will not be decreased at all this year, because our track record is excellent, and this is obviously very good news.
Carson?
And dovetailing along the lines that Mr. Cagiano already touched on, many constituents have contacted me voicing concerns over the feasibility study for educational models in the city. And a particular concern is the K-8 model. People seem not that enthralled of that, and they are thankful that the plan is being revisited. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee reports? I just want to add briefly, as mayor, I serve as chair of several committees, but I think the overall theme is that many of them are in budget preparations, and they are going to be working in order to meet those deadlines, in order to present, and we're having some very honest conversations about what to do with the impending state budget crisis, which seems to grow every day, and what that's going to mean for local impact. And so, there's the emphasis on grants, and obviously, as Councilman Kelly talked about, the value that we get from the School Readiness Grant is huge, and it's one of the things that there has to be a lot in place in order to maintain that. And similarly, with the dedication of a position for budgeting finance and grant management at Youth Services, it would, it's vital that we maintain these, and accurate record-keeping, retention of records, and all of that is a part of that. So, as you see some of these job descriptions change, I think you're going to see that a lot of it is going to be financial-focused. I've also passed on to department heads that, for those who may have employees that are interested, there's grant training opportunities through our membership at CCM, and I think that we need to start talking about more than just the low-lying fruit of the small grants and sponsorships that we get, but the other opportunities as well, in order to augment our services. We have implemented some overtime controls that I think are critical in terms of making sure that we know exactly where the money is being spent and how it's being spent, and really, looking at whether overtime is the real answer, or whether it's something that could be done during regular work hours. We're doing small things, too. In my office, we opted to not do a holiday party. There were so many scheduled, and so many people within offices did them themselves, that we ended up just doing a kickoff breakfast for the New Year, which was a one, it saved actually two-thirds off of what the previous administration had spent on holiday parties. And the mayor's conference, which has been a staple of the budget for the past four years, it's an over $3,500 cost, and we won't be attending this year as well. I think that we need to set the standard for all of us in terms of what we have to do to tighten those controls, and as much as I want tonight to be positive, and I do have a lot of positive things to share, I think that we are, we're not doing our jobs if we're not aware of what some of these state and federal implications are. So, we need to have that conversation with all of the committees that we're involved with, both as liaison and as voting members, because when it comes down to that budget process, there's going to be a lot of needs, and a lot of them are going to be competing, and it's going to be a very difficult position for many of us. Interestingly, at our youth cabinet meeting tonight, I asked the question of those in attendance that ranged in age from 10 to high school, how much they thought a fire truck cost, and the answer was $1,000. And then one of them thought better of it and said, you know, it's probably closer to $10,000. And the real answer is $800,000, and that's not if you have a ladder on top of it. So, you know, I think it was a great conversation, but I think it also shows that there are people, not just the 10-year-olds, it's the 17-year-olds, that probably don't understand the priority decision-making that has to go into making a budget and that long-term piece as well. So, on a positive side with that, I think that we've already touched upon the code enforcement, which continues to be a very vibrant committee, but from a committee's standpoint, with the other mayors and first luckmen that are in our area, we've started to have conversations about some of the areas that we have mutual concerns on, as well as the opportunity to continue to share services or expand on these existing relationships. And I had the most dynamic conversation this morning with the first luckman from Burlington, Ted Schaefer, and I wish that I'd actually asked someone to come in to take notes, because there was probably two dozen ideas of things that we talked about, and I'm actually meeting with Mayor Merchant on Thursday, and Mayor Stewart and I have had some conversations as well about what we're going to be facing as municipalities. So, I think that that's where we are with conversations from budget and committee work, and I look forward to continuing those conversations. And obviously, anybody that has ideas, there is no idea that's too outlandish or too crazy in a budget year like this. So, especially from a citizen's standpoint, anybody who may be watching us, if there's anything that you have to suggest, I think it's the year that we're definitely listening. So, without any other committee reports, we are moving on to unfinished business. I have two items. What does everybody else have? Anything to my left?
Nothing.
Unfinished?
Nothing.
To my right?
I'll just say one item that probably should have been under committee reports, but I skipped over it. I did get a tour of the Water Department's facilities a few days before Christmas. I won't tell you how long it was, because that'll scare you away from ever taking this tour, but so informative, and it is absolutely unbelievable how much property we own and maintain in order to protect and get water to our citizens. It's an incredible system that we have, and it's quite old and well-maintained despite all the water main breaks, and it's just, it's awesome. I mean, the word awesome, you know, it can be overused, but it's an awesome area of our city's wealth, let's put it that way, because it's an incredible amount of land that we own and take care of.
So, no other unfinished business? No? Okay, so we have two items as a council. As Councilman Kelly noted, the K-8 facility study has been issued. It is online. I think I have copies in my office if anybody wants them, but I think it's really important that all of you are aware of it, that you're aware of the different options, and that we, as a council, maybe come to some type of consensus about any feedback that we'd like to send back to the Board of Education about what those proposals are. And the second one is, last month, we had Commissioner Dunn from the Energy Task Force present to us, and they have been putting the finishing touches on the energy plan. You've all received the draft. It is going to be on the February City Council meeting agenda for February, and I'm looking at you, Terri, so I don't forget, because I forgot this one. And I need everybody to look at it again and read it and digest it, because from there, we have several recommendations and referrals that need to happen off of the acceptance of that report. So, we've received it last month, we've, we were all aware of it, but now I need everybody to digest it and be ready to make those recommendations as we see fit and appropriate from that task force at the February City Council meeting. That's all I have for unfinished business.
Mayor, what do you, the Board of Ed responses to you? How, is there a time, is there a timeframe?
I would say sooner rather than later, because they're obviously going to be looking to do work as well.
Yes, actually, it was the Board of Finance that funded the feasibility study. It's our plan to request that it be put on the Board of Finance's January agenda, and so that anyone who's interested in hearing it, there are four different options that they have played out in the feasibility study, as well as costs associated with renovation and what the recommended order of those renovation projects would be.
Okay. So, January, so prior to January 23, or attendance at the January 23 Board of Finance meeting for the floor report. Thank you, Superintendent Moreau. Okay, moving on to new business, I'll start with Councilman Kelly. No, I will start with Councilman Maderos.
I have none.
None?
None.
None for me?
Yeah, none for me.
Do you, so you made me start over there, but you don't have any?
No.
So, for new business, I apparently just skipped right over announcements from my office, but Mr. Dudco did allude to the fact that I do have open office hours tomorrow from 4 to 7 for any citizen who's interested in coming and having a conversation about anything, especially designed for people who can't get to City Hall during regular working hours. And we've had some good news. Aret, which is a company up in the former General Motors Industrial Park on Shippen's Hill in Council District 2, has changed their minds about relocating to another central Connecticut town, which, in data given to me by our assessor, they have $435,000 in property tax, and then another $20,000 in personal property tax, for a total of $455,669. So, if anybody sees the owner of Aret, please say thank you, because that's going to be great for our grand list. We're also aggressively talking with the owners of Chick Miller, and so we have some pieces in place to try to prod that conversation along, because it's taken way too long. And next week, I'm going to Hartford to continue the conversation with, and this time, we've been to the Senate Pro Tem to talk about hospital and also municipal issues, but we're also talking with the Speaker of the House next week. We have an appointment to talk to make sure they realize the importance of the hospital tax and the small hospital pool that is at stake, but also with Representative Ziogas, who's been spearheading the Memorial Boulevard project, to make sure that we're all ready for February, what is the date? February 7 is the first day of the legislative session. So, that's all good news, and I'm looking forward to seeing everybody tomorrow if they choose to come. I am making brownies, so there will be a snack. So, we are done with the new business. Resignations?
There's one resignation, and it's Patrick Nelligan from the Board of Park Commissioners.
Motion to accept the resignation, please?
So moved.
Send a letter of thanks? Okay. Okay. Motion has been made and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now, we are on to appointments, and there are several. So, starting at the top with Commission on Aging, a motion to appoint Kathy Duck to replace Patricia Malone, an unexpired term replace Patricia Malone, an unexpired term to March of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have two appointments for the Board of Fire Commissioners. The first is to reappoint Donald Goransson Jr., three-year term to January of 2021.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second one is to appoint Anthony Benvenuto to replace Barbara O'Neil, three-year term to January of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Anthony Benvenuto currently is still working with EMS, is a retired captain, and I'm hoping that we will have some emphasis on health, wellness, and training to augment what's already being done in the face of a new cancer registry. That is a big fire priority, as well as some other physical requirements that are going to be coming down the line. So he'll be joining the committee at their January meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Freedom of Information Advisory Board. We are looking to reconstitute this panel. It currently has two members. One, the third member is deceased, and so we have not had a Freedom of Information Advisory Board. I'm not sure if they've ever met.
Never.
Okay, so we are going to be reconstituting this, and it is our hope that this Freedom of Information Advisory Board will be a stopgap for those who may have concerns, questions about FOI procedure here locally, also serve as an advisory group for people to ask about interpretive issues, work with the Corporation Council's office to strengthen our existing understanding of the FOI law, and ensure that people understand what their roles are, whether they be staff, volunteer commissioners, et cetera. So the first appointment that I would like to make is for, to appoint Kim Karen to replace Alexander Karros, a three-year term to January of 2021. And Kim's background is in banking, and she's very well-versed with a lot of requirements and those types of issues, so I think she will be a great asset. Kim, thank you for coming tonight. So that is the motion for that. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion. Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
The second one is to appoint Josh Blacker to replace Nora Anderson to a term of January 2020. Josh is probably, he's under 30, I think, and he is an Army veteran who actually specialized in information services when he was in the service, and so he's very interested in serving. So that is the second person that we're nominating tonight to serve. Is there a second for Josh Blacker?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. There is a third member who I've yet been able to reach, so as soon as we have confirmation that she's still interested, we will be actually calling this board together and giving them their charges. The next one is the Bristol Burlington Health District, and I'm making a nomination to appoint Shannon Mulls to replace Mary Smith upon receipt officially of her resignation, which I'm not sure we've received yet, but we're tracking it.
I don't even have confirmation that she's resigned, and I have no resignation letter, which is required by state law.
Yeah, so pending the receipt of said resignation letter for a term ending in July of 2020.
So moved.
Shannon's background is in behavioral health, which in my discussion at my first Bristol Burlington Health District meeting, because I'm their liaison for Bristol, has been identified as a background that would greatly augment what they're doing, as well as connect into what we're hoping to do with the opioids task force and prevention measures. So I'd like to welcome Shannon, who's also here in the back row, and she will be joining us as soon as we work out the resignation letter so that it's officially received by the city clerk. Did we have a motion? Did we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we did. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. Bristol Historic District Commission to reappoint Linda Russell for a three-year term to January of 2023. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. The Inland Wetlands Commission, which is a mayor's appointment, and I am reappointing Sebastian Panietto as an alternate member for a three-year term to January 2021. For those of you who remember, we appointed Mr. Panietto last month, but the way the terms fell, he's actually up again this month. So he will be continuing to serve on the Inland Wetlands Commission, and again, that is a mayor's appointment, not requiring confirmation. We do, as a little commercial, have two other vacancies on the Wetlands Commission, so for anybody who may be interested in serving on a land use board, please contact my office. The Board of Library Directors, we have an appointment to bring forward, Dorian Rossi to replace Jeff Boyko, who is currently the chair and has served for many years. He has asked not to be reappointed. This is a three-year term to January of 2021. Ms. Rossi is actually a patron of both libraries, but lives near Man Ros, and I think will be a great asset to the board.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The second appointment is to appoint Jessica Bernier to replace Melena Acevedo, who has resigned, an unexpired term to January of 2020. Jessica also is a Man Ros library user, as well as brings her children to the main library and has a special interest in programming for special needs, and I think she will be a great asset as well.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. The next appointment is to appoint Robert Callett to replace Patrick Nelligan, who has resigned, for a term ending December 2019.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Police Benefit Fund to appoint Peter Dauphine to replace Scott Hayden, who has asked to not be reappointed, for a two-year term to January of 2020. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? This is the police officer representative to their benefit fund, so it has to be from within the department. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bristol Transportation Commission to reappoint Sean Gingeri, Citizen-at-Large Member, three-year term to January of 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. To reappoint Franklin Caputo, Citizen-at-Large Member, three-year term to January of 2021.
So moved.
Discussion? Motion carries? I mean, what am I doing? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. And the third one, to reappoint Robert Flanagan, City Planner, to a three-year term to January of 2021.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Nobody's opposed? Motion carries. Zoning Board of Appeals to appoint Michael Arasenko to replace Rippey Patton's former alternate member position, unexpired term to July of 2018.
So, second.
There's a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? I believe I saw Mr. Arasenko come in. Yeah, there he is in the back. He's actually not a Bristol-specific zoning family, but his father and others have been involved, and so this is a great fit, and I think that it'll be a great position for you to learn more about the community that you've now adopted. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And sitting next to Mr. Arasenko is Rory Gyo, who we're appointing to replace Steve Gagny, an alternate member who has resigned to an unexpired term to July of 2020. And again, another young person getting involved in land use who has a great background, both from a local standpoint, but also has an interest in fire and the martial component of regulations, and I think that that's going to be a great asset to the ZBA as well. So is there a motion?
I move it.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, both of you, for coming tonight. Congratulations. We have a late appointment to the Arts and Entertainment Task Force. Jane DePaul Boguji will be representing the Carousel Museum. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And let's see, we have, we have to do charter revision, which I will do last, because there's nine names there. And Tenure Capital Improvement Committee. This also is a mayor's committee, and I'm making an appointment of Tom, Thomas B. Hislop to replace Diane Waldron. So this is a change, because Diane Waldron is our controller, and I'm going to be replacing her with a citizen representative, so that she can continue to staff the committee and not be a voting member. Tom Hislop sent over his resume today. He is actually the manager of Facilities Operations at ESPN, and is someone who I think is going to bring a very interesting skill set in terms of physical maintenance projects. He has great knowledge of coordinating contract vendors. He manages an annual budget of expenditures in excess of $6 million, and also handles a lot of procurement and vehicles. So I think he'll be a great add to the Tenure Capital Improvement. So for him, is there a motion?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the addition of a citizen representative to the Tenure Capital Improvement Committee, which will shift our controller back to a staff position? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then I'm also going to bring on Board of Finance member Jake Carrier, because of his construction and project background as well, and he will begin his service, and he will replace the current representative, which is Cheryl Tebow. So the motion would be to replace the Board of Finance representative Cheryl Tebow with Jake Carrier for the Tenure Capital Improvement Committee.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. The last one on this page is our department head appointment, which is to reappoint Roger Rousseau, our purchasing agent, for a four-year term to January of 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this appointment? Hearing none? All in favor?
I wish we could appoint him for life.
Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We still have vacancies on the Plainville Area Cable Television Advisory Council, and we have vacancies on the Pine Lake Area Study Committee. And we are waiting to hear back about a grant, so that we can have a housing authority representative on Bristol school readiness, to make sure that we can continue that. We have one vacancy still on the Commission for Persons with Disabilities, and we are waiting for information on Board of Park Commissioners. So now, the last set of appointments are the Charter Revision Commission. And for those of you who remember, we empowered and had the resolution last month, and then there was confusion over whether the party balance, which is the usual party balance for a regular committee, we found out was different for a Charter Revision Committee. And so we decided, in order to not have to opportunity cost any of the names that had been brought forward by the seven council members that we would add to, and of those two that needed to be added, they would have to be unaffiliated voters or Republican voters, because we had the maximum number of Democrats on the panel, which was five. So tonight, we're going to do the seven that we had all put forward last month, but were not named, and then we are going to do the two additional. So the first one is Sandra Bogdansky, who is an unaffiliated voter. She is the Senior Data Engineer at the Hartford. Is this Carson Sasu? I wonder if he needs a ride? Okay. Then we have Calvin Brown, who is a Democrat, former city council member, and he is actually in the process of getting his master's degree in public policy at Trinity. We have John Fitzgerald, who is a Republican. He is a lawyer, and he is the former chair of the previous Charter Revision that was in 2017. We have Harold Kilby, who is a Republican, and he is a retired educator from the Bristol Public School System. And we have Jack Crampitz, another retired educator, who is still active at Bristol Eastern with, and he's Democrat, Bristol Eastern also retired from the Bristol Public Schools. Then we have Craig Minor, who is a Democrat, former city council member, and he is also the planner in the town of Newington. And then we have Michelle Rolfe, who is a Democrat. She is an office manager for the McKenna Orthodontics Group. And then we have Lori Ann Scotty, another Democrat. She is Assistant Vice President for Business Resilience at Lincoln Financial. And then we have Jonathan Mace, who is a Republican, and he's the controller at Gaylord Hospital. So I really expect great things from this group of people, because I think it's a great mix of corporate, community, and municipal involvement. So I'd like a motion to be put forward for, do we need to do them together, or can we do them, can we do them together? Yes. So the motion would be to appoint the nine members as named to the Charter Revision Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Just making sure I didn't miss anybody. I think we are good. Thank you very much. Okay, we are back to our agenda, our regularly scheduled program, and I will turn over the calling of the agenda items to our Town and City Clerk, and we are at...
Item 11.
You know what? What I'd like to do, just because I know we're going to lose people, and there may be people that tune out for, in the interest of making sure everybody is aware, we are going to ask the indulgence of the city council to add a motion. And I'd like to do that now, before we commence into the regular meeting. So at the end, we are looking for the support of the council to add an additional executive session, and I'd like to read this motion. The motion is to add to our regular city council agenda, an executive session to consider a proposed settlement in the matter of estate of Kyler Ring versus the City of Bristol et al., docket number CV156029810. Is there a motion to add this to the regular city council agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on adding this item to the regular city council agenda, which will appear with the other three executive sessions? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, now we will then go through. We have one, two, three, four, five. We have five regular agenda items, and then we will do executive sessions. And I think I will turn this over to our city clerk and our acting mayor, because apparently Carson's in crisis, so I'll be right back.
Item 11, award of contract 2P1843, consulting services for development of a tax increment financing master plan to Camoin Associates for $37,350, and authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item 12, authorization for mayor or acting mayor to execute any and all documents or contracts associated with the grant application for a CARA local crisis grant from the Department of Health and Human Services Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration. And that was a last-minute resolution that did come in yesterday afternoon, so it should be up on your screens. It is a resolution rather than a motion.
Is there anyone who has the resolution ready to read?
I can do it. Resolve that Ellen Zapo Sasu, who is the mayor of the City of Bristol, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and on behalf of the city council, a certain contract with the State of Connecticut Department of Economic and Community Development, and to affix the corporate seal, if any.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Oh, it's a resolution? Starting at my far right, Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
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 Motion carries.
And then that also would include a referral to the Board of Finance as well. The original motion included it, but the resolution doesn't have it, so.
Okay, and then we would move on to item 13?
Authorization for Mayor Ellen Zapo Sasu or acting mayor to sign any and all documents associated with and required by the Connecticut DEEP, general permit for the discharge of stormwater from small municipal separate storm sewer systems, including annual reports.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 14, to allow assignment of Contract 2P18617 from Smith Edwards McCoy Architects PC to Quizinberry Arcary Malik LLC, and Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute any necessary documents.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the fact that the companies have simply changed their names and we're updating our records?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 15, Resolution Regarding Approval to File an Application with the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office for Historic Restoration Fund Grant for a $40,000 project to remove lead paint from windows and trim at the library, and Authorization for Mayor or Acting Mayor to execute.
I can read the resolution. Be it hereby resolved by the city council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, that the filing of an application for funds to the Connecticut State Historic Preservation Office for an historic restoration fund grant for a total project cost of up to $40,000 is hereby approved, and that the mayor or acting mayor is hereby authorized to execute such application and any and all other documents relating to this application/grant, including but not limited to any final grant documents. Be it further resolved that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the grant application?
This is a reservation.
Oh.
Yes, discussion.
Discussion. Hearing none. Roll call vote starting on my left?
Yes.
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 Chair votes, yes. Motion carries. Okay, so we are now to, we have four executive sessions. Attorney Clift, would you like to preview that for us so we know what we're doing and who's going in?
Yes. I'd like the council's consent to first hear the executive session on Benham Street and 164 Union Street. That will be Attorney Lacy and myself. Then this next one would be executive session, item number 17, regarding the workers' compensation claims by Terry Boyko. That would be, again, Attorney Lacy and myself. The, how about if we do the one that we just added? That would be the executive session involving the estate of Kyla Ring versus the City of Bristol et al. And joining me on that would be Attorney Kristen Messini from the law firm of Howden-Ludorf. And then lastly, we'd like to go into executive session on Bates versus City of Bristol. That's item 16, and that would be Attorney Kenneth Plom, Assistant Corporation Counsel Jeffrey Steg and myself.
Did you outline 17? Did I, did I miss that?
Yes, you did.
Yeah, that would be, that was going to be our number, number one.
Okay. Okay. So there's a motion now to, who would like to make the motion?
Motion made.
To go into executive session?
To go into executive session.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're going to reconvene. Is there a motion to come back into session?
Motion.
Second.
All in favor?
All in.
Aye.
Okay, I'd like to just have the record reflect that there were no votes taken in executive session. We are now going to go to Agenda Item 16, and we'll start with that. So that is the executive session, and there is no action to come forward on that one. Then we will go to 17, the executive session concerning the workers' compensation claims by Terry Boyko. Is there a motion to come before the council?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilman Han?
I have two motions. First, is I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter into a full and final settlement, settlement for the heart and hypertension claim of Terry Boyko, date of loss February 22, 2006, in consideration of a payment of $22,500. I further move that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary funding. I further move that the Corporate Counsel or the Assistant Corporate Counsel be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate this settlement.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a second motion, Councilman Han?
Yes. I hereby move that the City of Bristol enter a full and final settlement for the outstanding Connecticut General Statutes, Chapter 568, Workers' Compensation Claims by Terry Boyko, PMA Number W890941533, in consideration of a payment of $95,000. I further move that the matter be referred to the Board of Finance for necessary funding. I further move that council for the City of Bristol be authorized to execute any necessary documents to effectuate this settlement.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to Agenda Item 18, the executive session discussing code enforcement liens concerning 76 Benham and 164 Union. Are there any motions to come before the council?